Good evening and welcome to the lower frontier township Board of Supervisors work session for October 28th of 2025. Let's all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll do our roll call. All are in attendance, including our township manager, solicitor, engineer, and our chief of police. Township meetings are recorded for the purpose of preparing the minutes, and the recording is destroyed after the minutes are approved. The meeting will be posted online on the township YouTube channel. The link can be found on the Board of Supervisors page on the township website. It is requested that all persons wishing to speak before the board shall state their name, address, the subject matter upon which they wish to speak. For the record, in the interest of facilitating the business of the board, all persons addressing the board should be limited to three minutes unless such time is extended by the chair for good cause. Individuals are requested to remain in their seats and to respect when other persons are speaking. The Board of Supervisors will provide a reasonable opportunity for citizens to comment on any non-agenda items after all agenda items have been addressed but prior to adjournment of the public meeting. First item on our agenda for business this evening is the conditional use hearing for 115 Bavington Road.
Would you like me just to start?
Go ahead, Peter.
Okay. Okay, we're going to open this hearing with some administrative matters, and then we're going to hand it off to the applicant to make his case in chief to try to move things quickly along. Is there anyone here in the audience who is at all interested in this, other than the applicants? Okay. That being said, I'm going to make my preliminary remarks shorter than normal. So this is a hearing. It's going to be held sort of like a trial. We're going to have testimony by the applicant. The board is going to ask questions of the applicant, if they have any. I might ask some questions of the applicant, but there are no one in the audience who wishes to be a party in the township as not being a party in this case. At the end of the testimony, we will close this hearing, and I'll ask whether or not the board wishes to deliberate at this time. If they do, we might deliberate up here, we might go to a back room, or we might deliberate at a later date. The board will have 45 days after the hearing is closed to take a vote and issue a written decision on this application. And, you know, just in general, for the audience, we will be accepting public comment at the end of the hearing if you do decide you wish to comment on it at that point in time. With that being said, I would like to enter into the record a series of board exhibits. They might, Mr. Gingrich might match yours, but we'll figure that out later. So I'm going to mark the application, along with the attachments, as Exhibit B1. I'm going to mark the legal notice and proof of publication, Exhibit B2. The letter from my colleague, Eric Allgood, to the applicant is Exhibit B3, notifying the applicant of this hearing tonight. Exhibit B4 is the affidavit of service of the letters being sent to the neighbors. Exhibit B5 is the affidavit of posting, of the posting of the property. Exhibit B6 is the engineer's recommendation and review letter. And that will be all of the board exhibits. With that being said, Mr. Gingrich, I'm going to hand it over to you. When we first start with swearing your witnesses, and if you want to do a brief opening or overview, go ahead, or you can go right into testimony if you wish.
Could you check your mic, make sure that it's on?
There, you're good.
Just make sure that you're on top of it so that everyone that's participating on Zoom can hear you.
We will do that, thank you.
Mr. Staub, you can use the other one. That way you guys don't have to share.
Yep. Before we begin, I do have a few additional exhibits, which I have labeled, and if that's all right, I'll approach and provide those.
That's fine, thank you.
Thank you, members of the board. So, good evening. As the solicitor said, I'm Oliver Gingrich. I'm an attorney with the Office of Landis-Huntsburger Gingrich &amp; We can Sauterton, representing the applicant this evening, Tom Sabia, who does reside at 115 Bavington Road, Hercules and Ville, his home and current residence. As you'll hear and witness testimony tonight, Tom's existing house is suffering foundation issues, and he's here because he wishes to repair and improve his home property to become an attractive part of the neighborhood. The necessity for tonight's conditional use hearing arises from direction from the township engineer that Mr. Sabia's non-conforming house, which is depicted on our exhibits, is located in a topography which, by definition of the township ordinance, is considered steep slopes, and that would be any slopes greater than 15%. The township's ordinance established a steep slope overlay on top of every zone in the township, and in any location where there's more than 15% slope, it was required to have conditional use approval in order to build in those areas. In addition, as shown on our plans, Mr. Sabia's lot is largely covered with a floodplain. And so the area that he has to build in is limited by those two elements, which leads us to our request tonight for approval to move forward. We believe that Tom's application, which seeks to improve approval to repair and rebuild his home and add well landscape garage and hardscaping as well, meets all the requirements under the ordinance to be entitled to relief. The applicant's put significant time and expense into building plans, architectural drawings, engineering. He understands that even if approved tonight, he'll still need to meet other grading, stormwater, and building codes before he can get a permit, and he's willing to do that. So, without further ado, I want to move into some questions for Tom. So, Tom, you confirmed your name already for the record. How long have you resided at your home on Bavington Road?
Just over 20 years now.
So, let's move straight to our first exhibit, which I've pre-marked A1, which is on a tab A. Just for illustration purposes, I'm showing you an overhead photograph taken off of the Montgomery County Board of Assessments website. Can you just confirm again where your house is located in relation to those lot lines and in relation to the road and also the creek?
So, on the property, the house is, I'll say, northeast section of it. It's 40, 50 feet off of Bavington Road on this slope.
And just visually locating it, it's up in the top rightmost corner. In my opening, I discussed the condition of your current house. Can you go into a little more detail as to why you are seeking to rebuild the house as it is now?
So, the house is 65 years old now. It was built in 1960. I don't know who the builder was. I assume that maybe John Bavington, who the name, the road is named after, he and his buddies probably built this place. It's, it's pretty much, when I first saw it, I thought it was a double wide on top of a block foundation. I mean, it's not, it's 1,200 square feet. It's not a big place at all. It's up against that hill. The front of the house is up against that hill. So, over the years, the foundation has cracked significantly, significantly in one place and fissures throughout. To me, it's in need of more than just serious repair. I think it pretty much needs to come down. I mean, I was in masonry my whole life. My family business is masonry. Been in business for over 100 years. Pretty much that what I'm looking at here. So, you know, it's not just like redoing this house. I'm going to make it way better than it is. Nobody's going to think it's a double wide anymore. So I have the ways and means to do this, and with your approval, we're trying to get it done.
Tom, and if you want to refer to the plans, you can. In general, just as an overview, what are the improvements you're hoping to build on the lot in addition to the rebuilding of the house?
In addition to the rebuilding of the house, I'm planning on having a 30 by 30 two-car garage put on it so I could store a lot of stuff in there, including my boat, which is now usually in the house, you know, in the garage underneath the house. Patio, large patio on the back, masonry, pavers, maybe stamped concrete. I'm not exactly sure what I'm doing there, but... So, just, you know, to make it more comfortable, make it more livable, so I'm not standing on a side of a hill when I want to go out and have a cup of coffee in the morning. It's going to be a lot nicer, not only for me, but my large family and a lot of friends. And it's something that I've always wanted to do since I bought this place, and I always knew I would do it. And here we are at this point.
In the course of planning these improvements, did you engage a builder, architect, and engineer to assist you in this?
Yes, I have.
What are the names of those professionals?
So, Tom Hamburger Builder is the builder that I have planned. M Design, Joe Malaro is the designer, and he has engineers that have helped out with some of the structural issues.
Tom, I want to draw your attention to the second tab here, which I've also marked A2. You just mentioned M Designs and your designer, and I believe he's an architect. Is that correct? So, just in general, the exhibits here under A2, are these the architectural plans that were designed by the M Designs for this property?
Yes, they are.
And in reference to these, as you wish, can you just explain briefly what you're looking to build in terms of both the house and the garage?
I was pointing out this.
Correct.
So you can see the exist, I think you can see, the existing house and the addition, which is the gray area. So basically, a house is going to be on the same footprint, just bumping it back. In one area, it's going to go back 12 feet. On the other area of gray, it's only going to be going back 6 feet. So, if you can, if you can all see that on the print. And then off the back of that is the patio area, and then adjacent to that is going to be where the garage is, all kind of to the south and west of the house itself.
Do those plans also show interior layouts for the property?
So, if you, yeah, sure. If you go in beyond that, these pages, it shows you the interior plans, the electrical plans, lighting plans, you know, doors, windows, pretty much everything you need.
So, going to your discussions with your professionals, did they identify to you the limitations of your particular lot as far as where to place the garage and the hardscaping?
Well, they have. That's where it is, is kind of where I wanted it anyway. But it can't go further back down the hill. I don't know, another 40 feet from there is floodplain. So obviously, you can't build a floodplain.
With respect to the steep slopes as they're defined in the ordinance, what's your experience of those around your current house?
Define, to me, define steep. I mean, it's on the side of a hill. As far as steep slope goes, it's something I didn't even know about when I was planning all this, but within trying to keep this house where, basically where it is, and add what I'm trying to add, I didn't have any other choice. I can't go east, I can't go north. I could barely go south towards the creek, and, you know, west is where the garage is going to be. I think I'm keeping everything where it kind of needs to be.
All right. So in the language of the ordinance, then, there are no alternative placements for these improvements on your lot, as far as you understand it? Is that correct?
Yeah.
So, to be granted conditional use, the board needs to consider a number of items, including things like the disruption to existing vegetation. Can you just describe around the areas in the gray that are the steep slopes there?
Yeah.
Is there vegetation that needs to be disrupted in doing this work?
So, there will be nothing disrupted as far as construction goes. Most of my property is, I'm going to say 75% of the property is in a floodplain. There are some trees down here, but that's down in the gray towards the creek. Where the construction is going to be is nothing but mowed grass. There's, it's not like we're bringing in dozers and tree crews.
So you're not going to be removing forest or natural areas?
No, nothing.
Okay. Let's turn to the last tab, then. Tell us a little bit about the foundations and the retaining walls that you intend to install.
Well, so currently, it's an eight-inch hollow block wall. It's all cracked up. Foundation is going to be 10-inch concrete, vertical rods, 36-inch on center. It's going to be horizontal rods, not exactly sure, but, you know, the appropriate distance for the horizontal rods, 10-inch concrete is the way to go.
In terms of the garage, how is the foundation going to be installed for that?
The foundation for that is basically the same. It's going to be a 10-inch foundation. It's going to have to be raised up to driveway level a little bit, so back of it's going to be maybe six feet high to floor level. Same 10-inch foundation, concrete, all the rods needed.
And generally, in a conditional use, the board has to consider whether your improvements will affect the health, safety, and welfare of the surrounding neighbors and community. As a longtime resident there, do you have an opinion as to whether anything you're looking to do will affect your neighbors?
No, certainly not negative. It'll look better driving up the street.
Now, you anticipate any runoff to impact any of them in relation to where they are located?
As far as water runoff, rain, flood, whatever, I am the last place where water goes before it gets into the creek. So water comes down Bavington Road and ends up coming in front of me or across part of my property. Like I said, the property is in the floodplain, so sometimes the creek almost comes up and meets me. So, now, I have, I have a little creek next to me, so water runs into that, that runs into the creek. All the other water on my property just goes right down to the floodplain or the creek somewhere in the other, into the Hercules Creek.
So, notwithstanding the fact that you don't believe you will have any impact, you have agreed to install certain stormwater improvements as part of this approval. Is that correct? And we'll have our engineer speak about those.
Yes, yes. There is a stormwater collection plan that we can talk about.
So I believe that is off to the left-hand side of the garage, and that's part of the required improvements.
Yeah. On the plan, it almost looks like a pool, but it's an underground, called a cistern collection, water collection.
So, in general, I, in my opening, mentioned that you're willing to otherwise comply with all the required and applicable building codes and ordinances. Is that correct? Is that's your intention here?
Yes.
For this to be approved?
Yep.
The additional details and specifics will be addressed by our engineer, but certainly, if there are questions for the applicant, I'm happy to have the board ask those at this point.
I don't have a question, but I wanted our solicitor to clarify. I think I heard you say maybe twice that you're looking for our approval. That's not our role today. Did I hear something like that?
You're here to either grant or deny the conditional use application.
Thank you, okay.
So that, you know, that approval is something you would be doing if you decide to approve it, yes.
Thank you. That's the clarification I was looking for. Thank you.
If no additional questions, then I invite Cynthia Smith, our engineer, to come up here, and Tom, you may have a seat.
Good evening.
Cynthia, could you just restate again for the record your name and the company you represent?
Yes, I'm Cynthia Smith, and I am president and founding partners at Horizon Engineering Associates located in Pennsboro.
And what are your qualifications in Pennsylvania?
Yeah, well, I graduated with a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Penn State in 1993, being a licensed engineer in Pennsylvania since 1999. And I've appeared before many boards and councils and zoning engineering boards and planning commissions throughout Montgomery Bucks, Delaware, Chester, Lehigh, Berks Counties, you know, over the past 20-plus years.
We do have a CV for Cynthia.
Cynthia, do you mind moving the microphone a little closer to you, really?
Certainly.
Yeah, try to speak into it to make sure.
No problem.
Thanks.
Thank you. I would ask that Cynthia be recognized as an expert witness for giving her opinion into the field of civil engineering. I do have her CV if you need that, but I think she's pretty well-known in the community.
Does the board have any issue recognizing her as an expert in civil engineering?
I'm fine with that.
You are good to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia, was your company retained by the applicant, Tom Sabia, to provide the professional services in preparing the attached plans and other engineering work?
Yes, we were.
And are you familiar with the township ordinance here relating to steep slopes?
Yes.
And if you want to refer to the plans, I'd invite you to do that, but could you just describe again where the steep slopes are in this property and how you calculated those?
Sure. So, steep slopes on this property are designated on the plan by a light gray area, and they're located, I'll say, to the east and south of the existing house, as well as on both sides of the existing driveway. Some of those steep slopes are likely, I'll say, man-made due to the construction of the house and driveway. Some of the others, especially along the east side of the house and further to the rear, would be more naturally occurring. The steep slopes that we show on here are generally between 15 and 25% grade. 15% is the minimum that the ordinance designates as being considered a steep slope, and we've calculated that based on the topography and the contours, measuring the distance between contours to determine the slope in those areas. So the light gray shading on the plan designates the steep slopes as they exist today.
Would be a fair assessment that, given that the gray surrounds entirely almost the existing house, that there would really be no way to add to the floor plan without this relief?
That's correct. I mean, the only place to add on to without the relief would be in front of the house, but the house is already closer to the road than the prescribed, the ordinance prescribed front yard. So adding one to the front, again, is not a great, great idea. Putting it closer to the road as well, to the rear, makes the most sense as well.
So this is just for conformity with the conditional use ordinance section, but can you confirm that the plan that your company prepared and is shown here today met all the specific requirements in the ordinance as to the required plant contours and other specifications?
Yes. So our plan that we developed is a combination of using available online resources, paths to contours, as well as supplemental field survey in the area of many of the improvements that are proposed. And we have shown not only the existing grades but proposed grades for the property. We had been provided with a concept by the, by M Designs, and then we took that plan and used the information to provide a more detailed grading plan and stormwater plan that demonstrates, you know, how the, how the grade will occur in the post-construction condition. We also documented materials and ways and means for some of the construction, including erosion controls, stormwater controls, and the like. We're currently in the process of having the plan reviewed by the township engineer for the grading and stormwater, and we should be actually resubmitting within the next week again to address her latest concerns or questions, clarifications regarding the plan and the grading, stormwater controls. We also engaged a soil scientist to visit the site to look at the soils that were on the site for two different reasons. Number one, the floodplain that is on the property, there's a FEMA delineated floodplain, and there are also, the ordinance also prescribes that certain soils would be considered floodplain soils, which would also be in the floodplain conservation district. One of the soil types that are mapped on the county soils maps appear to be floodplain soils that would be in the area of some of the improvements, most notably the garage and part of the driveway, or maybe to the west of the garage, are mapped as Bowmanville soils. And so we raise that as a concern, that that would be in the, technically in the floodplain conservation district, unless we could demonstrate that those soils are not correctly mapped. Soil scientists went out and did probes around the property in the area of the proposed improvements and determined that the, the line of the alluvial soils that would be considered floodplain soils was contained within the FEMA-mapped floodplain line, such that the floodplain conservation district does not extend beyond the floodplain, the delineated FEMA floodplain on this property. So they determined that, so that the soils are not floodplain soils that they're building on, which is, you know, certainly something that we wanted to be sure of. And then we also had them test for stormwater infiltration capability for the stormwater facility that we wanted to construct out here to control stormwater on the property for the proposed improvements. So that was also conducted as part of our, our design efforts.
Thank you, Cynthia. And then focusing on stormwater, another of the conditional use specifications is that stormwater is adequately managed. So maybe using your laser pointer, can you just show how you designed a stormwater system to address that concern?
Certainly. So we've designed a system of collection, stormwater collection pipes, both for the house and, and the other impervious surfaces. Downspouts from the house will be directed into a collection system. That collection system will also collect water from the patio area and the garage and will be directed to the proposed stormwater facility that's located to the west of the proposed garage in the clearing area there. That's the area that also tested for adequate infiltration, and that's been... and that's been designed to carry the water by gravity to that facility and infiltrate the bulk of the stormwater, actually back into the ground, as opposed to having any additional runoff as prescribed by the township ordinance.
Just to reiterate, obviously, your piping appears to go through the shaded area, and so is it your contention that there's no other place to put that stormwater system other than the steep slopes, which is why we're here?
That is correct.
Another requirement would relate to the erosion and sediment control plan. I believe that's on the second page of your plan, but just talk through the way you designed methods and systems to avoid erosion and to avoid impact on the topography of the area.
So flipping to the second page of our plan set, we have developed an erosion control plan that delineates the extent of the proposed earth disturbance and improvements shown on the property, as well as the controls that we've proposed. The plan indicates a combination of silt sock, 18-inch silt sock along, basically along the floodplain line, and then some smaller silt sock, I believe a 12-inch, along the western edge of the proposed grading and stormwater facility. Those are the primary controls. We're also indicating, after grading, erosion control matting on the slopes that are to the rear of the proposed improvements, so that there's no erosion or runoff from the newly graded slopes until vegetation is established. And then typical controls that are needed for the construction operations, such as the topsoil stockpiles and the concrete washout area to allow for, you know, construction to occur without disrupting anything else on the property and showing that there's been made allowances for those facilities to happen during construction.
Thank you. So just in general, is it your opinion here as an engineer that everything that was designed conforms with the requirements and the standards and criteria for conditional use as shown in the township's ordinances?
Yes.
And that there are no feasible or appropriate locations to put these improvements, other than where you've cited them?
There really isn't. As has been mentioned, the floodplain covers the bulk of the property, and we've utilized the remainder of the property that doesn't have, you know, woods or other sensitive features on them to provide the improvements in as close proximity to the existing dwelling as possible, so that it's contained within a small area, and really providing everything on the only available footprint that's available on the property.
Again, your professional opinion is the application and the exhibit sound in the words of the ordinance from an architectural, engineering, environmental perspective?
Yes.
Can you just, again, you touched on it before, but has this project been through certain levels of review by the township? And what's next?
Yeah, so it's been submitted. Stormwater and erosion control plans have been submitted to the township and have been reviewed by the township engineer. And we are, I'll say, we're still in that process, and we're getting ready to resubmit based on the latest review letter, and hope to receive, you know, adequate response from that in short order.
And then just lastly, as always, is it your opinion that this proposed improvements will not have any adverse impacts on the health, safety, and welfare of any of the surrounding neighbors?
That is my opinion, yes.
I don't have any further questions for engineer, and certainly I'd welcome any questions from the board as to the proposal.
Does the board have any questions for Ms. Smith?
I have none at this time.
It's the house coming down that's existing?
Mostly, yeah, yeah, pretty much.
Because I see your, on the plan, it says you're using the old foundation footers. And you're going to pour the walls on top of that, the concrete walls, or not?
We're going to incorporate some existing, not the foundations.
Any further questions? Mr. Gingrich, I have a couple. First off, the engineered plan, we have not marked that as an exhibit yet, have we? Because it's not part of your packet, correct?
It was submitted with the application, so.
Oh, I did not get a copy of it then.
Oh, okay.
Why don't we just be clear, because I think it's an important part of your case, mark it as Exhibit 4A, I mean, A4?
A4, that's fine.
Is that fine?
Okay. And if you need a physical copy of it, I do have one.
I'll grab one at the end, thanks. And then kind of building off of the last question, is the house currently non-conforming as to front yard setback?
I believe it is, yes.
Okay. And you're going to maintain that same front yard setback with the new house?
Yes.
And as far as any of the other dimensional requirements, any other non-conformities, or just the front yard setback?
It's also over the side yard setback.
Okay. And you're maintaining that?
That's right. I'm not getting any closer.
Thank you, that's all the questions I have. Anything further from the board? Anything further from you, Mr. Gingrich?
I don't, if you, if there's any questions from the audience, I'd invite those as well before I just give a summary.
Okay. Why don't we let the, does anyone in the audience wish to give public comment at this point in time? Seeing none, sir, you can give your closing.
Well, thank you again. And just in closing, I'll be brief. I know you've been patient with us. Generally, a conditional use approval reflects a consideration by the board that generally, as long as there's no harm to the community and specific requirements are met, that it's a byright use. We believe we fit into that. Certainly, I think this is an unusual property, and we believe our applicant is going to do a great job at making a really nice house if he's allowed to move forward. There's no requirement of a hardship, but certainly I feel, as a land use practitioner, that there are certainly hardships here as well. And so I would just ask on his behalf that the board consider granting our request. Thank you so much.
The only other thing I'll just point out before we close the hearing is that we do have a recommendation letter from the township engineer, Carol Schuler, who did say she could support this conditional use conditioned upon compliance with chapters concerning driveways, erosion and sediment control, and stormwater. Is that correct, Ms. Schuler?
That is exactly correct, thank you.
Thank you. With that being said, we can close the hearing.
I would move for my packet to be put into evidence if that's fine, including the A4, which we've talked about.
I assume the board has no issues with any exhibits put forth by the applicant? So they're so accepted? Now we'll close the hearing. Does the board wish to deliberate at this point in time and take a vote? Or do you want to push this off? We do have a meeting next week. You can push it off to then if you wish.
Does anyone have any reservations? Any other questions? Is there any reason why we can't move forward? Peter, could you read off a motion for us, please?
Yes. I'm assuming, assuming the lack of questions and issues, that will be, I'll put forward a positive vote. So a motion to approve conditional use application of Thomas Sabia, number CU 202501, conditioned upon the applicant constructing the home and developing the property in compliance with the evidence and testimonies presented today, and conditioned upon the applicant complying with Exhibit T6, the recommendation from the township engineer, Carol Schuler. And unless the board has any other possible conditions, I think that's it.
T6 is the thing you just, the document you just referenced that Carol spoke of.
Yeah, actually, I'm sorry, it should be B as in Boy 6.
B6.
So it is a cover letter or a cover email from Carol Schuler, and then her five-page review letter dated September 17, 2025.
Okay. Well, with the motion having been read, who would like to pass the motion? Chuck?
So moved.
So moved? I will make the second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All of those in favor, say aye.
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 Congratulations, Mr. Cynthia.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Gingrich will get a decision out to you, hopefully within the next couple of weeks. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll proceed in a couple minutes. Okay, moving on with this evening's meeting. The next item for, on our agenda for business this evening is 16 Woodside Avenue, discussion with the property owner. Is he here this evening? If you could come up to the microphone, make sure it's on, get close to it. Thank you.
Can you guys hear me okay? Can you hear me okay? I don't need to do anything right yet. That's good, okay. Good evening, board. My name is Jason Kerper. I represent my company, which is 360RE and Companies LLC, based out of Langhorne, Pennsylvania, so a little bit further away than probably normal. It was brought to my attention when I had submitted my application for a possible change of use on a property over on Woodside Avenue, that there were some concerns with what we were proposing. And, you know, we had a few meetings prior to this, that Jason and some other representatives of the township to kind of discuss what I was looking to do. And this was suggested, that I could come here, have a conversation with you guys. You guys can ask me whatever questions you were concerned about, and hopefully, we can kind of come to an understanding what I'm looking to do with the property. And hopefully, with that, I can put some proper documentation together and do another formal application in the future. So the property at 16 Woodside Avenue, we purchased the end of last year, actually, unfortunately, in January. I had an incident and broke my foot, and I was down and out for four months. So kind of delayed a little bit of things. I had a few meetings with Jason and Rebecca in regards to what I was looking to do. We purchased this property with the intention of making it a multifamily. Initially, we were discussing doing four units, four two-bedroom apartments in there. Then after having a few different discussions, it was brought to my attention that a three-unit would be more viable due to impervious surface being in the floodplain and having issues with adding that fourth residence. What we proposed was three two-bedroom apartments utilizing the current ground floor, which was, it's hard to say what the building was used for because it's been in disarray for so long. But, you know, with what I think it was, and potentially, I think, what most people think is the bottom floor was garages, potential storefront, and then it looks to be an apartment or two upstairs. What we would like to do is that ground floor, that initial eight to nine feet, make that garage space, which would inadvertently help with off-street parking, as well as have the actual residence raised, kind of like your raised home, like down the shore, or anything in a floodway, keeping the living space off of the ground floor. Currently, the house has an odd-shaped attic dormer. Again, it's gutted on the interior, so it's hard to say what it was used for. I'd like to actually make that second floor the bedroom space, is kind of what we're looking for. The preliminary design that you guys had was just me and my architect going back and forth on what ideas would kind of look nice, present well in the neighborhood, as well as not be off-putting with staircases on the exterior and things of that nature. So that's kind of why we landed on what we have, which is not set in stone by any means. We can definitely adjust it, but that preliminary design was kind of our proposal of, hey, this is how we're going to get to the finish line, and hope that it would meet the requirements that were needed. Being in a floodway, we are perfectly aware that we would have to put in some mitigation vents to allow any floodwaters to pass through the garage space in and out both ways. So there's flood venting that allows us to do that, specialty vents. They make different sizes. We can put them in different locations, whatever is actually needed on the design end to meet those needs. The garage space allows for two vehicles, which is what's required for two-bedroom apartments, is two off-street parking spaces. I think that's about it. I mean, I don't think there's much else. The impervious surface that's there currently, we're actually going to reduce it. If you look at the engineer drawings that we had submitted on the original application, I'm not sure if you guys still have them or not. There's a stone driveway to the right, which will not be used at all. That'll actually go back to grass and vegetation area to the right. There's a stone driveway there currently, has a lot of overgrowth, but we'll obviously revamp that and just keep it as a stone driveway, allow access into the side of the units, into the garages. Staircases for the units will be inside, so they won't be on the outside. We're not increasing the size of the building by any means. We're just going to renovate what's currently there. And then any overgrowth, exterior structures that are there, trash, debris, obviously, all that'll get cleaned up and plant some nice new trees, some vegetation that's prone to flood areas. That actually helps with floodwaters and things of that nature. It'll be all part of the final design, so. That's pretty much it.
So Jason, why don't you discuss how you landed on three units as opposed to a single-family home or two units?
You know, currently, I own quite a few rental properties down in my area, and we've always looked to grow a little further outside of our areas as being my wife's, you know, retirement plan. So obviously, a multifamily for us would be more beneficial than not. You know, it's not too far away to where it's not manageable, but at the same token, a nice little neighborhood like this, a nice little apartments would be nice for younger people growing up that want to get out of their parents' home, would want to live on their own. It's still localized and things of that nature. For us, financially, a three-unit makes the most sense for the build costs. Overall, what we were going to spend to bring that building up to today's standards and finish it, the income coming back from the three-unit apartment building would suffice that cost and spending that money.
We're just looking at your zoning application hearing. And it would be, I don't know whether you have that available to put on the screen, but I'm just trying to envision where the building is with respect to the floodplain. I'm trying to get my head back in the game. I apologize for that. Can anybody speak to that with any certainty?
What's that, Chuck?
Where is the building, the current building, with respect to the floodplain?
I can't make it out on this here picture they have in the back of this. I can't.
While they're looking for that, you mentioned you're moving, all of the parking for this will be on the.
In the garage space underneath the building itself.
So each unit has one spot?
Has two parking spaces and a private garage.
Just one, a one-car garage pulled all the way through?
No. It's, if you look at the design, our proposed design, they suggested it looked like a townhouse. And after looking at it myself and talking to. like a townhouse, and after looking at it myself and talking about it more, I kind of see where it's coming from. So, basically, when you're looking at the left side of the building, there's going to be a double garage door, a man door, you know, front door, walk-in with window, so that'll be a double garage door, it'll be a two-car pool. Each, yeah, each unit.
I'm sorry, could the whole board hear it yourself?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I was just showing them the floods in the area.
The whole property is in a flood zone? Yes. Did everyone catch that? The entire property is in a flood zone? Up top?
I'm Matt Kaplowski.
Oh, hi, Matt.
Resident I'll have a letter for this one.
So, can you speak into the microphone?
Yeah.
In our review, we looked at where it sat in the floodplain and whatnot. Didn't pop in our head right away to look for a floodplain there? It's Woodside on a hill, but as soon as we pulled it up in the DFR map from FEMA, the entire parcel is within the floodplain.
The whole parcel?
The entire parcel.
Not just the structure?
There's literally, there's ten square feet.
It's hard to say.
There's hardly anything outside of the floodplain. So, what I have here, what I have here is the FEMA DFR map, and then also, our software that we have for our company overlays the parcel map and the structures and the floodplain per Montgomery County records. And literally, just this liver is in the flood, or outside the floodplain. It's...
It runs up the other side?
Yeah, it runs, if you're looking at the property, there's a small creek on the right side, yeah. Actually goes under neighboring house.
Like a tributary.
It's not always small.
It's not always small. Oh, I believe you.
It's, there's a history of debris getting clogged in there.
Okay.
And flooding.
Backing up. I was kind of, to be honest, amazed.
I think one time it was like a roll-off or something was in there.
I was amazed that actually went underneath the neighbor's home. I've never seen that in my 30-some years of doing this.
I think the first two years I was supervisor, we saw some significant flooding there, if I'm not mistaken. We saw significant flooding in a lot of places.
Of course. We have it down our way, too, being on the...
Eight inches of rain will do that. I mean, I just, what comes top of mind is, you want to put, you want to put the garages underneath?
Well, that's what's, is used, part of it's being used currently, that way. Well, I shouldn't say that, who knows how long this property's been?
How many square foot is the property now? How many?
The property itself, or the building itself?
The building itself.
The building itself, we're not changing the square footage of the building at all, we're just renovating it. So, that building currently... 1770?
1770?
It's 30 wide by 59.6 inches deep.
Guess the way I look at it is, if this was a clean slate, you wouldn't be building there.
Oh, well, you're not allowed in that flood area, you're not allowed to...
And now, we're looking at, perhaps, you're asking to increase the number of people who can live there. And, in my opinion, this may sound a little funny, but people do stupid things.
I wholeheartedly believe that and understand that.
If you have people storing their vehicles underneath, who's to say? They still got to get into their units. And, they may decide to go down and get their car out of harm's way in the middle of a flood and become casualties. And, I mean, you know, we see it all the time, right?
Yeah, I understand.
You saw it in Texas, right?
Yeah.
They got a waiver from FEMA to build in the floodplain. And so, I, I'm just not seeing it. It's me, personally.
No, and I appreciate that.
And I'm a civil engineer.
Yeah, I understand that, and that's why I'm here. I mean, for, from what I understand, I'm probably the, one of the property owners that's gotten the furthest with this property in the past 20, 30 years, from what I understand. So, you know, I'm here just presenting, have this conversation, to kind of feel what you guys are looking at and what you would expect to see, and, you know, we can get this design, have really good engineers and have really good architects behind me for the things that I've done in my direct area, and I feel like we can get to a solid conclusion that works for everybody. But I just don't know what those concerns are, and obviously, when I put the application in, there were some feedbacks, so we decided to go this route, to have this conversation. So, that's why I'm here, I'm going to take notes and kind of see what you guys think, and I'm going to make adjustments, and hopefully, we can get there. I want to help renovate the property, obviously, not only for myself, but for the township as well, because from what I understand, that thing has been in eyesore for a lot of years, and it's a potential risk of the way it's sitting, and the condition it's sitting in. You know, and honestly, it's owned by private people. So, if it's not me, it's somebody else that's going to buy, and what's going to happen in another 10 years if it's sitting there? You know, it could fall over in that neighbor's house. So, I'm willing to spend the money and take the risk and have that potential opportunity for not only myself, just to get it where it needs to be, and be a producing property, and be a nice property in the area.
So, I have a question, I'm not sure if it's for Carol, or if it's for our code enforcement officer, but we have a house down on the bottom of Springmount Road that is in the floodplain and was flooded out, '21, '22, I can't remember which year. And, they decided to rebuild, and they built the whole house up. I don't believe they have a garage. So, I guess my question is, if you build your house up and don't have a garage, is that better, worse, the same?
Come on, sit next to me.
Kind of like up on stilts, I mean, some of those houses by the Perkyomen Creek, they built them up, kind of on stilts, and I'm guessing if there's a flood coming, they just move their car to a friend's, I don't know. But, those houses seem to be legal and okay, so...
So, those were the houses that have been substantially damaged over the years, per FEMA, substantial damage. So, a lot of people with NFIP, that have NFIP insurance, they have just so much substantial damage, get grants to do renovations to their house to elevate them, so that the first floor level is 18 inches over the floodplain, the delineated floodplain. So, that's what a lot of these have gone down the Perkyomen, down Wazekin Creek, the Skupu River and all. So, those are the ones that you're speaking of.
So, what you're saying is, these are ones that are, have just consistently been damaged and damaged and damaged?
And they're not changing the use of them. It's a single-family dwelling that's remaining a single-family dwelling.
So, it sounds like you're saying, if he decides to do the same thing and build the first level, would you say 18 inches above the floodplain? That would not be acceptable? Or, would it be acceptable?
For the same use that it, that had existed?
Well, he's looking to do apartments.
That's, that's where the change is. It's already a non-conforming structure, for the first floor, for the setbacks, for the left side, actually, those sides, and the front. But, in the R3 district, which is lies, apartments and whatnot are not allowed to be there, are not identified, I apologize for that, are not identified as by right or by structural exceptions. So, if it was to go back as a single-family dwelling, being completely renovated, us on the code end of things, would require them to make all the utilities above base flood level, use the bottom as parking and have flow-throughs. But, the extreme change of use not being by right and whatnot is where we raise the flag right away.
So, what I'm hearing you say is, theoretically, he might be able to do this as a single-family home and raising it up? I'm just asking theoretically.
Well, now, the first floor that's above the floodplain is, was being used as a garage space, which is under block foundation. So, if we were to renovate the single-family home, the living space would already be above that. What I'm proposing is doing the same thing, but not having a single-family, just making it a multifamily purpose. I'm looking to renovate this thing and sell it, I'm looking to renovate it and hold it, is the purpose behind it.
So, I am a proponent of infill, readapt and reuse. Now, now that we know that the entire property is within a floodzone, I'm concerned about, are we going to be adding stormwater facilities? Adding utilities? And then, we've got our change of use, and then, now we have environmental impacts because it's in a floodzone, so it's like we're compounding on top of each other.
Well, by reducing it down from the four-unit that I originally spoke to Jason and Rebecca about, Rebecca brought it to my attention, if I keep it a three-unit or less, my impervious surface doesn't change, I wouldn't need to do stormwater management. That's why we reduced it down to a...
So, we have no, we don't need to do stormwater management on this at all?
It's an existing impervious surface.
Okay. Is there, are there utilities there already? Sewer, water?
There's sewer there, we have a dormant sewer, there was water and there was electric. I don't think it's on, I'm not paying the bills for those, and I don't even have an account for those, but we did put our sewer EDU in a dormant status currently. So, if we were to do this as a multifamily, I would have to pay for the two more additional EDUs and then size it accordingly.
This is more of a question of, does the board, because the original application was, you know, for relief to allow them to put the multifamily in here, which is not allowing the R3. So, the rule, the question before the board is, are you okay with this number of units? What he's proposing from a engineering, structural, legal standpoint, you know, meets the floodplain, because he's going to have that first floor as, you know, not occupied, not habitable area, he's going to, he's proposing to construct the necessary architectural changes so that floodwaters can get through it. So, that's, you know, that's not really the big issue, the issue is, is the board, where does the board stand on the number of units? And the conversion of, you know, from what it is now, we really don't know what, to, you know, three dwelling units?
I mean, obviously, our design would match those things, it would be up to today's codes, the floodwater, the vents, anything that needs to fall within lines to renovate this property, to keep it up to today's standards, we would do. But before we go down that long road of designing and engineering it, it's kind of, is this something that you guys, if we come to an agreement where, okay, you know what, we would be okay with it based upon your final design, as long as it meets all today's codes and standards and wish lists, then we would go that route. And if it's something you guys are totally against, that's fine, too, it's just, you know, getting to that point.
I said it once, I'll say it again, I can't in good conscience put more people in harm's way.
I appreciate that, thank you, Chuck.
I would like to see a way that this piece of property could be used for a residence. I'm not convinced we should have three residences there, but I have no objection to exploring ways to have a good quality residence on that property.
I lean that direction. So, Section 17115, nonconforming uses and structures, existing nonconforming uses and structures located in the floodways shall not be expanded or enlarged, you're not expanding or enlarging, unless the effect of the proposed expansion or enlargement on a 100-year flood levels is demonstrated to be fully offset by accompanying stream improvements. Modification, alteration, repair, reconstruction, or improvement to any nonconforming use or structure regardless of the location in the floodway or flood fringe, or general floodplain area, shall be done in compliance with the flood elevate, with the elevation, floodproofing, and anchoring provisions under Section 60.3D of the National Flood Insurance Program requirements, and with the provisions in this article and other applicable ordinances. Just to give everybody kind of what we're looking at. I'm not adverse to having the property reused again, but I do share supervisor Yizer's concern about more people. That's pretty much where I'm at, at this point, so we might want to explore some other options.
I mean, I want to put our public works people on the spot, but I believe in 2021 or 2022, Woodside was underwater, and we lost a good part of roadway and had to do some repairs to it, if I'm remembering correctly. Definitely had to close it because it was underwater, right? Yeah.
Does anyone else have anything else to add? Terry, Terry?
Yeah, it'd be nice to see something done with it, yeah.
So, just so, if I was to propose putting this back to a single-family home, at this point, there would be no conditional approval for anything except for building permits and engineering to bring, for renovation purpose at that point. So, if I was to make that decision to do that, obviously, numbers have to make sense for me, it's a business for me, it's, I'm not living there, and I'm not going to sit here and tell you that I'm going to, because I'm not. I mean, I have my home, I lived there, I've been there since I was 23 years old, and my wife doesn't want to go anywhere. We looked in this area, because we know, we have friends up this area, we've been up this area, actually, a good friend of mine lives in the townhouses across the street, and we liked the area, and to come across the property in that condition is very hard nowadays. I've built quite a few properties in floodzones and floodways, you know, I know that area Croydon down, down in Bucks County, and tons of those homes that I've built down there, I've raised and things like that. So, taking a project on of this nature didn't scare me by any means. I'm not opposed to making it a single-family, I would really like to make it a multifamily, to keep it for longevity for myself and possibly turn it over to my kids if they want to deal with tenants in the future. And that was the purpose behind it. It would be a good income-producing property for myself, and my wife and my kids in the future, and I don't have to worry about selling it, and, you know, it's just the longevity of it. If I'm going to turn it into a single-family home, I'm not going to rent it, I'm going to turn around and resell it. So, those numbers have to make sense for me. So, that's kind of why I was here, to present that, you know, if we're not talking about putting more families in harm's way, we're still putting one with the property that's there. Obviously, it's existing property, so there's no, you can't, we cannot say that I can't renovate what's there, it's existing, I'm not building new, so I understand that part of it as well. So, you know, my, my side of things is, well, if I'm going to renovate what's there for one family, why don't I make it more beneficial for myself for future? And that's kind of where I went with it, so...
Point taken.
If that's where we're leaning toward, more single-family, I just want to make sure that I'm very clear on that, that there wouldn't be any approvals needed, and we just go through for building permits and go that route, and that's the route I would have to take. I would really like to explore more for multifamily, but if you guys are really against it, I completely understand, but I was here to present that, and hope that I, you know, did that in a good manner for you guys. you guys.
So just, just to throw this out here, this board will change in January. So we don't know what the new board will want to do. And a question I have for Peter. If he wanted to continue to explore more than one residence on that property, would that be zoning hearing?
Well, he, if he's going to do more than one, I'm not, I don't, I haven't memorized ER3, so I don't know if duplex is allowed. Obviously, three units is not allowed, which is why he needed a variance.
Matt has it up here. He can state what's on code here.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, single-family detached dwelling, three units, or three dwelling units per acre, lotline house, no, village house, no, patio house, no. The only one that we would have to look into is a single-family semi-detached dwelling, four units per acre. So we'd have to do the conversion, maybe get two in there, make it a twin. But it would still fall by right. So.
So would
It would be the normal processes.
So would a twin, would a twin then share a wall?
Yes.
Like a carriage house? Is that what you call a carriage house?
That's a new townhouse or a new row home.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, okay. So is there an option to explore then?
You know, he, if Jason wants to come and get, offer something else different, he certainly can.
Yeah.
You know, like he said, if he decides he wants to build a single-family home, you know, that, he doesn't need, he should not need any zoning relief and he's certainly not going to need any relief from you guys. So that would just, you know, go through the administrative process. If a twin is in allowed use and he can meet those zoning requirements, once again, he doesn't have to come through us. If he wants to do something where he's going to have to go get zoning relief, he probably is going to want to come to you because he's not going to want to end up in the same situation where he files an application and then the board decides we're going to oppose it because that's what he doesn't want to deal with. So it's really, I think you've, you've stated your various opinions. I think Jason understands them and
Wholeheartedly. I mean, I've had multiple meetings with Jason and I think we're on four or five at this point, just to get it to where we had that application. I presented, we had a conversation, actually prior to even buying it, Jason and myself and my four-year-old at the time, were here chatting about what I was looking to do and that kind of gave me confidence in purchasing it, that, you know what, listen, that building's been vacant for so long, the township would love to see somebody actually do something with it. I don't see, you know, what you're kind of discussing, if we can present it in a proper manner that it should be, should be have a lot of pushback on it. So then we had another meeting discussing, I had some preliminary drawings of what I liked and then I actually spent some time with my architect to get these designs. So I'm open. I'm open to hear suggestions, I'm open to hear opinions. Listen, I've already owned it from this year, I've paid taxes, I've paid the mortgage payment on my line of credit that I used. So at the end of the day, another couple of months isn't going to hurt me. I'd like to really make everybody happy and then come to a very solid conclusion.
Would you consider a twin then?
I would, especially the fact that I could do that. I mean, I have to run the numbers for myself to make sure, you know, the building costs are building costs and we all know what they have done in the past five years. So if a twin still makes sense to where in 10, 15 years of me owning it, would it make sense on the back end for me? Wholeheartedly, I would, I would be okay with it, especially because we don't have to put anybody in a situation to approve it or deny it. The three unit from when I ran my numbers was kind of like my, okay, I had a three unit, that makes sense financially for me to put that kind of money into it. A three unit would bring that money back. I'm not opposed to it. I'm not opposed to anything. I'm open to anything. If you want to make it a tri-bleed park, I'm cool with that too. It just, I want to know what, you know, what we're looking at and I'll figure something out. I mean, I own it, so I have to figure something out. And I don't want to be another one of the owners that just kicks it down the road, just like they did, just like a beer can, get kicked down the road and I want to, I want to stop them. I want to build it and I don't want to make it
I am concerned about the flood zone, but I would like to see something happen there. I hope we, I hope we see you again.
Okay.
Thank you, Jason.
Okay, up next on our agenda this evening is Township Code Use and Occupancy Inspection Ordinance Draft Discussion.
I think you just need to announce you're tabling the sludge bid discussion? Or is that taking?
Oh.
Yeah.
My apologies. Okay, back it up. I checked it off prematurely. Request for Proposal Authorization to Advertise Sledgehauling RFP.
So the board, at my recommendation, we just need to be tabled and pushed off to next week's meeting.
Okay, we will table that this evening for discussion next week. Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening is Township Code Use and Occupancy Inspection Ordinance Draft Discussion. Jason?
Well, I think I'll talk while he's moving over. So obviously this, this ordinance, the permit ordinance, is that the right one? Yep. Or Use and Occupancy Ordinance has been before the board multiple times and we've been slowly refining it. The last go-around, we had Carol Schuler look at it, Robert Preston, our sewer engineer, look at it. Also, I believe there was a request that staff look at Schwenksville's version of this, because that's what Schwenksville Borough Authority currently does. And so we just wanted to make sure we kind of meshed with them. So I did look at Schwenksville Borough's ordinance. It's not exactly the same as one being proposed here, but I think they mesh together, they would work in generally the same fashion. Mr. Preston did look at the ordinance and made some suggested changes to it. Some of those changes I did not accept, but based on them, I made further changes because it was clear that the way I was reading things, Bob was not reading it that way, so I tried to make it clear to address some of his issues. And I believe Carol's, we made some changes to reflect Carol's suggestions, but I think Carol, you have some others that might still need to be added, I suspect, correct?
That is correct. I looked at what you put out Sunday night and shared some comments directly to you at that
Yeah.
So does that mean this is still a work in progress?
I think we're, we're in the red zone.
Does that mean this is the final draft or we're almost at, I mean, where are we?
Well, we're, we, this is not going to be the final draft and it's not the final draft being in front of you. But I think we're at the point, if the board is happy where it's at and the board is happy with our next discussion item, the property maintenance code, the next step would be to merge those two ordinances together for adoption. And as part of that merger, I would then add Carol's, you know, try to address Carol's comments, which are not going to be major changes to, to the ordinance language.
So does that mean we would see a final draft for next week? Is that what you're saying?
If you ask, yes, I could.
I'm just, I'm just trying to understand where we are in this.
If you, if you would like it for next week, I can get it to you next week. Yes.
I, I just have one question. If the township has a reason to believe that there might be an issue with a lateral, can we request an inspection? Is that, cannot be one of the triggers for an inspection?
Yes, in fact, I think Schwenksville has that. So yes, we certainly could do that.
Okay, thank you.
I think this, this came up at a previous meeting. What's the exemptions for the sold, transferred, or conveyed? Is that in here somewhere?
Exemptions for what?
So for when a property is sold, transferred, or conveyed?
Between families specifically. I believe eight, seven or eight exemptions.
It's in here.
Yes, it is in there. So there are exemptions if, if it's a transfer between family members, that doesn't trigger a transfer tax, that's exempt. If it's a transfer between estate to family members, that's exempt. If it's, I think foreclosure would be in exempt, I believe is one. But yeah, they're definitely in there. I do believe there's seven or eight of them. Yeah, there they are. Yep.
What page did you say that was on? Seventeen?
Seventeen of the ordinance, page nineteen of the packet. Your packet's the same as mine.
Number three on page seventeen, which is crossed out. And there's a comment there where I really can't
Can't, it's very small.
Read it.
Remove
Yeah, the comment is from Mr. President, Mr. Preston.
Yeah, it says, "To remove it, a lot can happen in five years or match what we agree with, what the CCTV is valid." I don't know what that
CCTV is, was his term for the televised inspection.
So he's saying that five years is really too long a period of time.
Yes.
That things can happen even within five years at
Even with new construction, yes.
Okay. So the number of exemptions would be six if we
No, actually, it would be seven.
Is there another one on the next page?
Nope. One, two, then skip three, three's deleted and the next one is three.
Oh, you got three threes, two threes.
Yes. Well, I changed the numbering once we
So it was originally eight, but now it's seven. Okay.
So I'm just going to hypothetical. When this development went in here, right? And then, you know, those individual lots at Arcadia got sold twice. I mean, would that mean they'd have to do a camera inspection? Or no, actually, they, when they, when the developer sold the lot, I think it was empty and then the lot got developed and the developer sold the lot again. We got two transfer taxes on each parcel in that thing.
I believe the first exemption would apply. It's the developer or builder of the home transferring to the original occupant. So you, you could have a plot of land be sold multiple times, but it's only the final sale when it finally gets developed and the, someone who's going to actually reside on the property buys it, that's the one that's exempt. And obviously before that, it's, it's empty, so you don't have an issue with lateral to inspect.
It's also exempt for the one year. So if it takes them a year, it's a bigger problem. Okay. All right.
Bless you. Are the blue, are the, the blue comments, are these all Bob?
Yes. I do believe so, yes.
Okay. So it seems like we, are these comments that came after the last meeting? Is this, is this his input?
Yes.
Is he looking for a response from us on this?
I think he's just providing his input on it and also explaining why, in some places, you know, why he suggested changes to the, to the language.
Have you answered some of his questions on this, Jason? Okay. Well, he's asking, is the lateral inspection defined somewhere to include both onsite and CCTV inspections? The owner, the owner providing the township with current CCTV for review prior to scheduling of an onsite inspection.
Yeah, it does, it, the ordinance does state, and this is something where I made it more clear based on that, that the, a lateral inspection is basically two parts. It's a visual inspection by someone going on the property and visually inspecting the property, you know, looking to see if it can see, you know, any improper tie-ins to the sewer lateral, you know, in the basement, wherever. And then the second half of that inspection is the televised inspection, what Bob calls CCTV.
So that's actually been addressed?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, well, if some of, most of this stuff has been addressed already, I'm ready to move past this at this point. Anyone else have any questions? No? Okay.
I think it'd be good to get this on the books by the end of the year. We've been talking about it for a while.
So then we have, why don't we just move on to our property maintenance code? Because we can do this all in a F L sweep. This should be a combined motion. Okay.
Yeah. Just not sure if you want to load this onto next week's agenda.
It's up to you. If
I mean, we got all this paper to go through here.
I know, I'm, I'm, I was half-heartedly hoping that we could maybe just table this all together.
Then go right ahead.
Okay, well, we're going to table this. I'm sorry, we just spent some time on that. We, we can table both of these items until next week. We just had a quick discussion on this. This was going to be easy. I'd like to get to the budget stuff. It's 8:30.
Are there any major changes in the other piece?
The only major change was to address your concern about the weeds and it was changed to match our current property maintenance code so that the only properties less than one acre need to ensure that weeds are, are under a foot high.
And for the record, I'm okay with that.
Good, thank you. But that, that's the only change to the property maintenance code.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we will table those two items until next week. We'll pass that to what we're going to advertise, I guess it would be. Is it what we're going to advertise? Authorizing, gotcha, okay. Thank you for that clarification. We are now on to the fiscal year 2026 budget presentation. We are now on to the fiscal year 2026 budget presentation.
All right. Hitting the sewer fund first. So as far as the operating revenue, this is just showing you what we're forecasting for this year and what is the proposed budget. We, just so the board is aware, and to restate, we have taken any future developments such as Melbourne or Greenbrier out of our proposed budget. So currently, we don't have any, there's no developments or future developments in any projections or... So this would just be the completion of Farm View. But as the board may recall, they pay their tapping fees upfront, so it's only really affecting the sewer charges. Any questions on the sewer operating revenue?
So you're taking a very conservative approach regarding revenue?
Yes.
Got it.
So we're proposing, forecasting this year, I'll just kind of do the bottom line. We're forecasting this year to end the year at 1.133 million, and for next year's budget, 1.064 million. Sewer use charge is going up, as we'll have, you know, more of a full year for the new houses that have been, that are occupied. We've obviously only have one sewer connection tap-in fee, which would be one of the things that would have dropped this below what we forecasted, what we're forecasting for this year. Any questions?
And for the 26 budget, for that one tap-in, again, very conservative, that would completely go to the reserve?
So per the board's direction at our last budget meeting, that's 100% going to the sewer capital, yes.
Right to CIP, yep.
When you said, just to be clear, when you said an increase to the, whatever you just said, the collection, it's not the rate coming up, it's more people paying the rate.
Correct.
Yep, thank you.
Sorry.
Just want to make that very clear.
I have not, I'll just leave, there's no proposed rate increase for next year in this budget. Any other questions?
I've got a question. I know our sledge hauling is coming up for renewal. Do we, did you build in a, an increase? Are we expecting an increase in sledge hauling? Is that built in, or are we using last year's number?
I did build that in. I'm going to be getting on to the expenses as we kind of move along here.
Okay, thank you.
So sewer fund revenues. Decrease of 45.6 thousand in sewer connection tap-in fees from this year, which would have been a 6% decrease. As I've previously stated, we did receive our Farm View tap-in fees upfront in 2024, and we are expecting the remainder of the homes to be completed in 2026. And just restating that, we have, since Melbourne Hill or Greenbrier is currently on hold, we have, and we have no other major developments suspected in the near future. So they've been taken out of the projections. $35,000 increase in sewer use charge revenue, which is a 3.4 increase from this year's projection. That would be proposed 15 total new connections for 2026. There is no increase proposed for next year. $20,000 decrease in interest income, which is 85% down from this year's projection, since we're going to have much less money in the sewer fund. In this proposal, there is an $86,000 reserve usage, as this proposed budget does have a deficit. The 2025 projection does have a $460,000 deficit, but as I've said at the monthly meetings, that's a large chunk of that is for the 2023, 2024 tap-in fees that we're transferring to the sewer capital that were not done last year. And this is just showing the projections out. Proposed $1.064 million of revenue, as you can see, through 2030. 1.147, that's with the increase in connections, averaging one tap-in fee a year. And just kind of guessing in the future with the interest. Onto sewer fund expenses. We're proposing an 8.9% overall increase in overall labor. We are continuing to use a 5% inflation rate for our operation and maintenance costs. We are continuing to do the proposed operation, the sewer line televised cleaning repair. We did have one section done this year. That amount has stayed the same. Currently, I'm proposing zero set-aside funds. And then the CIP purchasing and that percent of tap-in fee, which as Terry asked earlier, that 100% is going towards the sewer capital. And this is just showing the individual numbers with the projections through 2030, proposing $1.15 million expense, and that going up to 1.234 by 2030. And as you can see, the 7405, that is the transfer, that's the full transfer to the sewer capital. But I have taken out the transfer to sewer capital basically because the fund is funded. And that was only proposed initially from the last meeting at $10,000, so... That's something we can reinstitute whenever we see, you know, really whenever the board sees fit.
Sorry, Jason, I have one more question. You assumed an inflation rate of 5% on the sewer fund, but I know that PICO has raised our rates 10%. So is that kind of just figured in there, or does it need to be higher?
We've been using 5% for the last few years. I can say it's been hit and miss on what line items it seems to impact. I can say for utilities, which has been one of the areas, we did bump that up. $4,000 up, roughly $4,000 from this year, which is actually a jump up from $70,000 that we budgeted for 2025. Another area would be the supplies chemicals. We budgeted for $68,000 this year. I've got us projecting for 82, so that's at 86 with the 5%. So certainly, if we want to raise that number, we certainly can. But like I said, it's been kind of hit and miss across the funds where inflation's really impacting us.
Yeah, it'd just be nice if we could keep up with inflation.
And as, and to Marla, your previous question, I was projecting at $110,000 for sledge hauling, but in next year's budget, I've got us at 123, just short of 124,000.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions on expense? Do we want to adjust the inflation rate at all, or be comfortable with?
So I'm looking at the sheet here. If I'm understanding, this year 2026, you've got a deficit of 57,000?
Net income should be, there should be a deficit of 86,000 with the 5% inflation. Yeah, just short, yeah.
Or is that on this sheet? So what is this sheet?
You can, I don't know what happened to this, so I'm a little confused.
You've got a lot of different things we're looking at here, Jason.
There's way, way too many moving parts here.
You've got me bamboozled.
Yeah.
So this last sheet, should I just throw it out? I don't even know what it is. There's like two sheets that are big.
I mean, we were provided before our special meeting on 10/15. I mean, that's what I've been working off of. Those are the numbers I've been working off of. That's the information I've been working off of. I assume that was our draft. So now I'm kind of confused on why we're, what all this other, is it the same thing?
Well, I would have made, I mean, there would have been adjustments, potentially. The sewer, so the adjustments from the last, from the first draft, there'd have been a change in revenue of $8,400 would have come off, and $16,000 worth of expense. So I changed the transfer to sewer capital. I took the 10,000 out, and there was a change in the O and M sewer that dropped that $6,200.
Yeah, I mean, just to put it in plain English, I've got two sheets here, and I'm not sure what, whether I should just be putting them aside, or because they're not agreeing with other sheets.
Yeah, so both of, both the things that Chuck's talking about, there's a net income surplus loss, 57,738 line, but then the smaller one, the summary, continues with ending fund balance, prior year balance, sewer capital reserve, and expense. So just explain quickly, the 57,000, is that just straight revenue versus loss?
Do you want to see the sheet I'm looking at?
Yeah, I don't know where.
Here, have him come over. Okay, so here's what Chuck's looking at, the end of ours. 57, but then on your summary, but that's still here. That's the same one here, and then to get to your here. So try to describe that in the middle. Same number, but then you add that, that, that.
This isn't matching my.
What's this one, this is just the difference between these two. No, that's the 57.
So, yeah, so the net income, that would have been net income for the sewer fund.
What's due to general?
This is the summary. I have a feeling this may be messed up.
Okay.
So I would say go to the individual, go to the individual sheets. This was a summary sheet.
So these are something in the, don't look at the little one.
Don't look at that one.
Got it.
So the big sheet is?
Yeah, look at the big sheet.
The big one.
That shows 57.
Yep.
That's better. So the numbers on your PowerPoint are from the summary sheet?
Yeah.
Okay, that's.
I apologize for that.
Is there any way you can make that a little bit bigger? Like, a little bit bigger? I mean, I got my glasses on. So what you're showing here, it's, you're not moving anything over to the sewer capital?
Just the tap-in fee if there's a connection.
Okay. Yep. And I believe that you stated we had 616,000 in reserves? 619, or was it 616?
Projecting a 631, right, end of the year?
Yeah. When we had our meeting, it was, he said it was 616 or something, but year-end projection, that makes sense.
Yeah, so for rear-end, actually, na, uh... Have that year ended in 672, 259.
I'm sorry, say that again?
672,259.
Is that number on this sheet?
It's on the CIP fund. So it's, I redid the sewer, the sewer capital, because I know that was confusing sheets. So that's going to have blue on it.
Okay, I see your number.
Yeah, at the bottom of.
There it is.
The only thing I can think of is I must, I don't know if I uploaded at an odd time. My stuff is, appears to be matching.
Yeah, this is, like, this is the first time I'm seeing.
That's a new, well, that's the change. So that was what, that was the sewer capital before, but I've changed the format to try to make it easier for you guys to look at. So like where you see the projects now, that's more just kind of like that... Because you know how I was breaking that out into an Excel sheet? So it was easier for you guys to look at this actual projects, the proposed projects themselves.
When you say projects, you mean like pump station, sewer plant, sewer line?
Yep.
These guys are projects.
Yep, got it.
So that, I did that on the fly because...
So the 26, 2026 projects are separate than what's in the budget? Or are they a line item in the budget?
They're, they're in the capital budget, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I, you know, this is a nitpicking thing, but I think going forward, if we're using project, then change the, change the column header to project as opposed to category, that's all.
Okay.
That's, if that's the terminology we're using.
Does anybody have any questions? I'm just trying to wade my way through this here. Is there anything outstanding to anyone that I think needs to be addressed?
I mean, only that, you know, you've got, again, just understanding what, what you're thinking about. You know, it looks like you've got in 2026, I'm looking at your sewer fund CIP sheet, the blue one. You say amount used from projects, so I assume that's an expenditure, right?
Yes.
$96,000 approximately. So what types of?
It's 106 of proposed expense, so that would be a laptop, the UV service parts, cameras and key entry, the heater for the headworks, awning for the flood barriers.
Okay.
So I know one of the things that came up, so as far as the upgrade of the headworks bypass suction line, having the proper suction line installed before the headworks building would allow one person to be able to hook up the bypass pump in any kind of emergency situation safely and efficiently. Having this installed would also allow the pump to be in use for any kind of cleaning that would need to take place of the wet well in the wet, in the headworks building. It would eliminate the danger of an open manhole while any of these events are taking place.
Okay.
And then the headworks valve vault heater. The heater in the headworks valve vault has been out of service for many years now. With this heater not available in the vault, there's a risk of any piping and/or valves freezing and bursting in the vault. The piping and the valves in the, in the vault are a crucial part of the operations of the treatment plant. So this is, this is obviously a replacement.
So what you're explaining is the response back to asking for a justification for the heater for the headworks building? The awning for the flood barriers? And exactly what was the upgrade of the tank bypass suction line for the headworks building? That's what you're, you're putting out to us now, that was.
That was an ask of the board at the last, at the first budget meeting.
So like I said, I'm working off of everything that you gave us at that meeting that I've been working on since you gave it to us, so I'm a little overwhelmed with all this other new stuff. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick with what I got here.
Okay.
Yeah.
So one of the things was the overhang of the flood doors, the flood barrier that were installed, I guess last year. The reason behind the suggestion of a building overhang roofs on the side of the headworks building and the filter building is to be able to have cover over the flood doors for the buildings as they are stored on the side of those buildings. Having the flood doors uncovered is allowing the gaskets for the doors to rapidly deteriorate from weather and ultraviolet rays. It was recommended by the manufacturers that the doors are protected from any weatherization. So that was the, that was what the recommendation, that's why they recommended doing an awning.
That makes sense.
And then aside, we don't really have this in the budget, but I'm just noting, planning for an operational SOP, the public works would like to begin the planning process for having a building built at the sewer plant for all sewer operations and maintenance to be out of.
Say that one more time.
The public works would like to begin the planning process for having a building built at the sewer plant for all sewer operations and maintenance to be, to work out of.
Is that the storage building you have in here?
Yes.
Okay, 50.
Now, that's not for next year, I think that's, that's.
It's 28.
Yep. But I know that was one of the questions from the last budget meeting too, is this, the storage building.
And what's, that's, oh wait, where is it?
It's in 2028, as Terry said, it'll be.
28, the sewer plant, the filter media for the.
Oh, it's on that one.
That's on 28, the basin cleaning's on 28. 27 is a future expansion, Ziggler's Road.
Okay.
26, you got the computer, UV service and parts, the security system, cameras. You have the heater for the headworks. You have the awning for the flood barriers. And you have the upgrade of the tank bypass on 26. And Riverside Security System Cameras and Delphi, that's all on 26.
Yes.
At our meeting, you mentioned that you were probably going to move those two to 2027.
Uh, no, I was, I was actually moving them from 25 to 26. Those have been on the, we've had those on the budget, we have had.
Okay, and you, and you actually rounded this down to five grand each, originally it was 5513 for each of those.
Yeah, so some of that would have changed because the, taking the inflation rates out.
So it looks like if I include the 2026 stuff for sewer plant and pump stations, it comes out to 106,140.
Yes.
Right.
Which is.
Okay.
At least a number matched.
Yes, it does.
Could you say that number again? It's 106?
It's on this, it's on this slide too, Nora.
That one plus this one is.
It's 106140.
Some of these guys, everything that's 20.
140, got you.
Some of that sewer plant.
Okey dokey. Thank you.
Yeah, our challenge with the door entry and the cameras, we just need to get one more, we need to get one more vendor out so I can, so we can give at least three quotes. Any other questions on the sewer capital other than?
No, I don't have any questions. You guys already asked about the proposed fund balances.
Any other questions on the sewer side?
I guess the only other, just general question is when we put in these security system cameras, is there any impact on our insurance in terms of lowering it or?
That's a good, that's actually a good question, because, I mean, we only have really the cameras at this building. I don't know if we get it, I don't know if there's any discount, I don't believe she's mentioned it. But we do show her, you know, it is, when we do our walkthrough, we do, you know.
They look at it.
Okay, yeah, oh.
I think, the only other, excuse me, the only other thing I'd add is just a reminder of things that we talked about at our previous meeting was going into the next year, you were going to see if there's any opportunities with other authorities to see if there's chemical cost sharing to get that number down. We also talked about kind of doing more of an inventory of what we have.
Yep.
The sewer plant, pump stations, understand the exposure, if things go south, if things fail, warranty periods, who services those, if those are negotiable. So a lot of work that has to go in the next year, but for now, we're focused on the budget.
I believe we talked about a consortium. Yep. Yep.
I mean, I guess the real question is, you're asking us whether we're okay with the projects that you have put in there? Everything else is, it is what it is, right?
Uh, pretty much, yes.
I'm, I'm okay with the project you have listed there.
Okay. All right, liquid fuels and the open space fund? This is just a breakdown of the revenue and expenses. Did change. So as far as the, the liquid fuels fund, our liquid fuels tax is, or seemingly seems to be going down, which is what we've got budgeted. Of course, that's the bulk of our revenue on the, on the revenue side for liquid fuels. As far as expenses, we've been using, we've been using liquid fuels for salt purchases, which is still in there. Oil and chip of, of up to five miles of road. We have, next year will be the last payment of the F-550 dump truck. And then we have a Bavington Road and Stormwater Project that would be coming out of liquid fuels. And another one of the questions was, we did build in, there's $50,000 under road construction, which would be the pre-work for the oil and chip that kind of caught us off guard last year. So I know that was one of the questions that came up also, whether we've, we've budgeted to have additional monies available. So that's, that would be one of those line items where, you know, we should be able to get some savings, assuming that there's not, and it's, you know. Because generally speaking, we, we don't know how much until we get out there as far as some of the prep work on, before the, the roads get oil and chipped. And the Bavany project would be one of those things we would have to get approved by PennDOT, which, it's a mill, it is a mill and pave. And I believe it's been long overdue. I believe it was one of those things that was put off over the years for the potential sewer extension. Well, I know the water extension went up across, up, up there, but I believe, and I might be a little out of turn here, I believe Bavington was on the sewer, from back in the early planning stages of the sewer extension for Riverside and. Good. You had me worried, Chuck. I don't want to misspeak, but yeah, the water, the water line definitely goes up, up and certainly up and over or under, I guess, the creek to Upper Frederick. Obviously, we're to try to help the general fund capital is why we're looking to do the major road with, for Bavington. And then in 27, we've got on there Creekside Way and another Stormwater Pipe. That's another road that's been in dire need. The guys did go get out there last, this past year and got a lot of thumbs up from the residents out there, have been waiting for us to do something. We do have, I believe one of the pipes is, with the amount of water that's coming off Stone Hill, it's been undermined, so it's, the pipe, the pipe work's going to be, because it's going to be a big project. But that's, that's in there for 27. And then as, like, moving forward with 28, that's where oil and chip's down to 100,000, because the fund would be, that's, that's all it can sustain based on the current proposal and projections. But as I understand it, if we're able to oil and chip at the $200,000 amount, we should get close to being caught up where we can, as long as we stay on our regular maintenance program and don't get behind, you know, we should be okay with, with the 100,000 until this, until the liquid fuels can get built back up again. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but all I can say is I hope Harrisburg figures out how to help municipalities in Pennsylvania take care of their infrastructure, because this is a recipe for disaster. I mean, they need, they need to figure this out and either fix it or come up with a new way of funding infrastructure projects, because this is just a disaster.
I know I mentioned it before, the state did a true-up back, I believe in 14 or 15, where they added significant amounts to everyone's looking fuels, because the bridges and roads were in disrepair. But that, that was like a two to three-year period, and then that, we're back down to kind of where it was 13, 14 years ago. And that's why, yeah, like, once again, that's why I've got it continually projected to go down slowly. But I know this has been one of the debates in Harrisburg. Any other questions? Yeah.
The meeting you were talking about on that Wednesday, we told Terry Byrd that 150K for Ziggler Mill was in there?
Not, not, not. Not, not, not in liquid fuels?
That was in the Capitol.
No. Now, if the board blesses the Bavington and Creekside, that will, and as long as we're doing our regular oil and chip, it's, it's going to need to get a couple of years to get refreshed. Any other questions? All right. Open Space Fund. Collections for this fund started in 2021. Currently, we have a Highlands grant in for 333 Sanford Station Road, which we are continuing to work on. And the, the Open Space Board has looked at, they've been talking about doing an Open Space Mailer, actually, most of the year, they've talked about doing that. So those would be those amounts, the, the, the 300,000's in there for potential. And then year over year, and this was one thing that changed from the last meeting, for $100,000 of conservation purchases year over year after next year, to not surpass what we were bringing in as far as with earning income tax. Any questions with Open Space? And the only thing, other thing to consider. And the only thing, other thing to consider with open space, just as a side, is you are able to use a portion of open space money for park maintenance. I don't, we've not really talked about it, but just to give you something to think about. That is an authorized use. I believe it's 25% of your revenue for that year or so.
Is that something we could decide at any time? We don't have to put it in the budget. We could decide on April 28th, we want to spend $3,000 for whatever, for park maintenance. We don't, we don't have to decide that now, we can do that.
It's always been my understanding, open space, it's not a, it's not a regulated fund that we have to budget. We budget it for, you know, I think as a good practice. But yes, we would, we, we, that would be a change we would be able to, to make as long, you know, that would be something that the board would vote on, but yep.
Thank you.
Any questions with the open space fund? As we climb into the fund, fund, fund. All right. The general fund budget summary. Overall, revenue is budgeted to decrease 2.8% from this year's forecast. There has been an impact on the general fund for one of the current subdivisions consisting of 42 homes, which is Farmview, that started construction in 2024. And taking out the 43-home subdivision for Melbourne slash Greenbrier, since we have no idea when those houses will be constructed. Our earned income tax currently is projected to increase 4.8% year over year. Real estate is budgeted to decrease 2.8% next year. Sorry, that's real estate transfer. Much like the sewer fund, we are usually utilizing the inflation rate of 5%. And as we've been kind of looking at as, you know, how that impacts our current future purchasing. There is currently hiring of a new Public Works employee next summer. The overall expense is budgeted to increase 5.1%. So one of the big changes from last week or two weeks ago is the impact from the capital fund transfer. As the board may recall, when we started, I think the initial draft, we were, we had a net income of over 700,000, negative, negative 700,000. Changing a bit how we're utilizing the capital reserve money or how we're getting, trying to fund the capital reserve money for next year. The capital fund can, can support the projects that are in the, in the queue with just the, and so the 100,000 is the annual set aside or annual transfer. So that's, that would have been a significant difference from two weeks ago. Week ago, feels like two weeks, sorry.
So a week ago was 361 and now it's 100.
Yes. Right now, based on the amount of projects and what we have and projected, it's difficult to set aside too many funds with the current condition of the general fund. So that was kind of my thought process and kind of changing how we've been doing that. While also taking some relief, putting some relief on the general fund, at least for next year. I think, you know, as we've been discussing, we're gonna, as far for future projects, purchases and how we can finance, whether it's grants or financing. So this would be the revenue for the, for the operating revenue. We're forecasted to end the year at $2.62 million. Next year's budget for revenue is 2.549. As you can see, permits were extremely high this year with the, with Farmview build out. We also, there was also a large project at the middle school. That's, that, that's almost a $100,000 swing. EIT has continued to go up, so that's, 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 that's conservative. It's kind of in between conservative and aggressive on that. I have real estate transfer dropping slightly. And then real estate taxes going up with the new homes being occupied as they come onto our assessment. Any questions?
Go ahead, Bob.
So, so running the real estate transfer through forecast, it's, it's honestly, there's no try or true way to do it. Sometimes it's, it's basically best guess based on history. So there's really not a, it, there's, there's so many factors you could have, or you could have one large home that skews, skews the data. So it's not, I can say 14 years, it's not, you're kind of, it's one of the few lot where you kind of, you're really kind of spitting and throwing against the wall and hoping you're getting close. But there's no, all we have to work on is historical data, also understanding that we, with the amount of homes that are still expected to be built, you know, there is gonna be some transfer tax. So I felt comfortable with the 189, 110 proposing for next year, basic, since we were kind of, we're ending the year with, at 194, or at least that's what I'm projecting. Any questions on the operating revenue? This is just a break, breakdown. As we know, most of our revenue comes from real estate taxes and our income tax. And then followed by real estate transfer, cable franchise fees, which continue to go down. Obviously, interests are, the interest amounts are starting to go down. 51,000 increased in EIT tax revenue, so 4.8% increase from the, from this year's forecast, which I previously said. 5.5,000 decrease in real estate transfer tax revenue or 2.8% decrease. 16.9,000 increase in real estate revenue. Just so the board's aware how I determine that, I basically take the average call, the average assessment of the new houses being built, which, let's just say, I believe the assessments, it bumped up the average almost 30,000 for the assessment over the Arcadia houses. So that's with that bump up in real estate revenue. Overall, there's a 71 point, or 71,000 decrease in overall revenue, which is 2.7% decrease from this year's forecast. And here's the, here's the projections over through 2030. Proposing for this year, for next year's budget at $2.549 million of revenue. And I realize it is going down, but in 2030, looking at 2.476. To Bob's point, you see the real, if you, I know it's hard to see, though I got, I'm projecting the real estate transfer going down over that time period. Along with permits and kind of staying steady. Cause as we have seen is even in a tough market, people still want to make improvements on their homes. That's, that's been kind of a. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but just for those of you who remember the budget from a year ago, it looked different because we had an expectation that Melbourne Hills would be built out and possibly other developments. We are now not basing it on that assumption. That doesn't mean it won't happen in the future, but from where we're sitting today, we are not assuming those houses will be built. Therefore, some of the revenue in that area is, is the reason for these lower revenue projections.
Any other questions? Comments? And EIT, I'm just gonna keep projecting up until it goes flat. At some point, generally speaking, earned income tax does kind of flatline when you don't have a lot of new housing. You know, we've still got that, plus I, I, you know, with our other transitioning into, you know, we've, over the last three, four years, we've had a lot of houses remodeled. So there, there has been a lot of activity that would not have been happening 10 years ago, so. All right, to our expenses, this is just a nice pie chart showing the percent. Police labor is at 31, police labor and O and M is at 31%. Public Works labor and operation and maintenance is at 26%, and followed by admin at 14. Fire and ambulance at 9%. Keep in mind, that's, that's, we have the taxes that, the real estate tax that flows, that comes in and out through us. Professional services at 7%. As far as the expenses, we're looking at a 13.3% increase in overall labor. 8.7% decrease in overall O and M, as I stated previously, we still are using 5% inflation.
Did you say 13% increase in labor?
Yes.
For, are we, which line are we on?
Uh, I'm not on a line, this is overall, this is, this would be overall across the, it's not one line, it's gonna be the labor for admin, public works and police.
Okay, I guess we'll get to that.
This would be kind of the high. Proposed budget has a set aside CIP expense. As I stated previously, there is a new hire in this current budget, proposed budget for Public Works. Expenditures without reviewing beyond the impact of the fund, road repairs and paving, storm sewer repairs. Continue to update our ordinances. We still have continue to remove dead ash trees from township parks and properties in our open space. One thing new that came out of this year is the park board is continuing their park improvements. This year, they actually put together a comprehensive review as far as capital needs wants, so I'll go over that when we hit that. We did have a, the CBA agreement, collective bargaining agreement with our police department with a 3% wage increase over the next three years of 26, 2026 to 2028. So this would be the, the proposed expenses. Proposing a $2.888 million draft budget in 2026. Through 2030, that jumps up dramatically, and that is primarily for what's in the capital reserve or proposed in the capital reserve. As previously stated, labor is one of the areas that's, that's jumped up with the new hire benefits and wage increases. Our legal engineer tax collection, that's, that's, that's staying relatively the same as we've budgeted previously. Our insurance is not, our property and liability insurance is not going up dramatically. And as I stated previously, the big jump down would be the transfer to capital reserve only being the 100,000 instead of the previous number. Any questions? Something new we do have in this budget, we did budget for Community Day, which is one of the line items in the, in the, in the breakdown. This would take the place of Fall Fest and being conservative, budgeting for 7,000 of expense and 30, there's a $3,500 line item on, on the revenue side, as the goal would be to obviously have it pay for itself. But that would be something that's new to the budget that's not been in there previously. And that's on top of the normal park board events. Oops. That's been, that's been in the budget over the last several years.
What is our contribution to Fall Fest?
Uh, I believe the Fall Fest contribution, I think Becky said was around 1,000-ish.
I don't know that it's.
Roughly about that. But I also know Park and Rec has a donation, like commit, like they're working on trying to get sponsors and to help, to help offset the cost of the events that they're doing. So.
I, I think a Community Day would be fabulous, all our neighbors do them.
Oh, something also that's in next year's budget. We did do, the contracted mowing has been separated out. That was a, that was two one-year agreements that the board blessed in the spring. So we do have that built in. I don't know if it's in your packet, but I have provided you, the board, the, got the 2026, 2027 project goals for Public Works. I know that's kind of the offset for having the summer mowing, is that they're able to do inlets, storm sewers, different things. That may not be in your packet, if it's not. It is in Dropbox, but I'm not sure if it made it, I don't know if it made it in your packet or not, but I'll certainly get to you, that, get that to you guys. get that to you guys.
Do we have the 25 numbers for mowing? I don't, it's a zero still for projected.
So the, so the mowing, that 40, the contracted services is where I put that line item. So I know that was one of the questions Noel had. Since we're creating a contracted sewer, I'm just going to, for this year, I'm going to move that number into there. So that way it's easier, it pops out. But that 46,100 is what I was projecting for this year. And I, this last, this is the, this week was the last week we were planning to have them mow. I, I will say it seemed to work well. We didn't get complaints. I, I know the areas that I saw looked great. So.
So we don't actually have the actual cost yet? Or are you saying it's somewhere?
I'm projecting it to be 46,100.
Which, and the original draft that you gave us was under road contracted services.
Yes, which it still is current. I only added the line item because of the proposed, of proposing putting it in next year's budget. Since that's a pretty significant number.
Contracted services mowing 62.5.
Yeah, for next year.
That's the proposed you had.
Yep.
And then you put it in 26.625, okay.
So as I had asked in my question, how much did it actually cost compared to what we would have spent ourselves so that we can actually see the comparison here? I mean, that was part of the point. To see if we wanted to move forward, but if that information isn't available yet, I'm hoping we get it soon.
I see what you're saying, but I, I think it's hard to, to know. I think, and I remember Terry was pushing this, I think one of the reasons for it was to free up the guys to do other things that had been pushed back. And my sense is, and you're both sitting here, my sense is that you got a lot done by not having to do the mowing. I'm seeing some heads nod, and I'm assuming that's what would happen if we did this again for next year, you'd get a lot more done. Because a lot of those projects, they've been sitting for years and years and years and years, so.
Yeah, I, I don't know if I can put a monetary number on it, Noel. I know we did when the board was deciding whether or not it wanted to move forward as far as like what it was costing us to mow.
I believe when we were talking about it in the beginning of the year, number wise, it was high 50s.
That's what I have, yeah.
It kind of came out evenish, like it seemed like it was worth it to just do it because that's what we would have spent anyway.
We didn't get much rate again like this second half of summer.
So there were times where they, they weren't cutting it all. Okay, thank you, thank you for that.
And like I said, if it's not in your packet, I'll, I'll get you guys the, their project goals for next year and the year, the next two years. Everything else is relatively. Relatively the same, any of the big numbers.
So in the, jumping back to the police line items, wages, that one has a bump. Is there an additional officer in '26?
So we, so in talking to chief, he withdrew that, so we did pull that out.
So that will lower, or does that show the increase? Okay, sorry. So, yep, I got you. That didn't go up much.
That shows.
Okay.
There's something came off of what we saw last week.
Okay, so the number in there is, is updated, thank you.
Yes, yep.
Okay.
It's about $126,000 swing.
Hall in, yeah.
So if you, if you look at the budget, just make sure I'm understanding this correctly. If I look at the budget summary sheet.
Oh, there's.
The red column, those are adjustments that were made since last Wednesday.
Yep, you'll see either stuff added on or taken off. That's kind of, that's the, that's the tweaking in between the drafts.
Right.
It's there somewhere, I realize you got a lot of.
So at the beginning, you mentioned a, I think you mentioned a reduction in the transfer to capital.
Yes.
So it's to 100, now it's now going to be 100,000 because we already had close to 400,000 in the capital from previous transfers?
Yes.
Okay.
We've been, we've been building it up and we not had, the, the made, most of the major expenditures were funded, like, like the sidewalk was grant, the police, so we've, we've not had a lot of major purchases.
Okay.
So that's, that was the change, that was the 200, that's like a, was like a $261,000 swing, just to try to take some relief off the general fund. And I know we.
So then the other, the, the labor that you mentioned is in public works? Increase in labor?
There's actually a decrease in labor.
62.5. That's O and M.
It's O and M.
Labor, public works.
Yeah.
Decrease, what is that?
It's, no, wait, the 2025 budget originally included in addition, but because we did the mowing, that got reduced. It's still a higher number than the other one. So it's not a, yeah, yeah.
Well, so keep in mind, the, so Terry.
Yeah.
Part of the increase is because I based it on the projection, not what we budgeted last year. So like for the, so public works labor, I projected at 234, 276 from the original budgeted number of 259. So that going up to 272, that's, that would be one of the things that kind of jumping that, probably that percent up more so. Because I know you're wondering like about as far as the 13%. But I bait, yeah, I base that off the proposed not, or the projection, not the, not last year's budget.
So there's, there's not a projected increase in, in labor?
There is. What I mean, what I'm saying though, is based on the projections, not last year's, but I know you mentioned, like we had a, we had a public works guy obviously budgeted, that was one of the reasons.
Yeah, I guess. This guy, this guy, this guy's budget, that's it.
Okay, I found the sheet. Addition of one employee, June 1st, 2026.
Yeah.
So, so recently, we've asked you to look into just across the board insurance, we're not diving into this one right now, but.
Mm-hmm. I, like I said, I started those conversations and I will circle back with her tomorrow, actually.
Yeah. And we're projected at 8% this year. If you look at last year, it's probably almost the same, so it's.
Yeah. It's, we've been lucky because it stayed in single digits. Because, well, I say lucky, but I know there's other outfits that are in double digits when it comes to that.
What's the purple columns that you have with the 2026? What's the difference between the purple 2026 and the proposed? I think we already talked about this.
So the purple has the 5%, so that has the inflation rate in it. So the proposed is what I, you know, so a lot of times I may take last year's number, but the, the, the purple is where we, we use that inflation number to kind of. And I think, I believe it's about a 50,000-ish swing between the proposed and the, that's why like with the labor, you don't see that change, but like really with the O and M. I try to take either last year's where we ended or the previous year and.
So my contracted service is 7.105.
You'll, you'll see those be the same year over year if it looks like, yeah, yep. Like in ours, like roads, bridges and, like I kept that at 31,500, which is what we budgeted for this past year. And then with the inflation, that bumps that up to give us, to give those line items some You know, they got some nice accounting software that would make reviewing a lot easier. It's out of the spreadsheets. You still going through stuff? Do we have questions or?
Yeah, does anybody have any other questions? Are there any concerns? Were we, is this the end of our presentation?
I'm ready to hit the CIP.
CIP. Where the fun is.
Actually, I did not read that off. So currently, the deficit, the net income would be 339,235.
Yeah, again, not a question, but a comment, but I mean, the big unknown is inflation. And we just can't control that unfortunately, so hopefully we'll, it won't be too bad.
All right, so as far as the sewer fund, or excuse me, the general fund, capital fund, expenditures for your review, hardware systems, the manager laptop, permit property management software that's been on this year's budget, that's, I'm, I'm punting to next year. I have had some contact with some companies, a door lock system, the camera systems, township sign, which we actually submitted an LSA grant for, camera system for the public works building, parking lot paving for here, which we put an LSA grant for, hopefully those, we'll find that out in this soon, whether or not we get any of that rewarded. So some, the Cuddy Dog Park Dog, excuse me, the Cuddy Park Dog Park Stormwater Project, which was on last year's budget and this year's, that potentially could be one of those projects we can still get done this year, but it, I, I do have it proposed for next year. One of the new items, I had mentioned the Park and Rec had created kind of a capital plan. And one of the things is an enclosed trailer. I know this has been talked about for, for several years. I know currently Tommy's been loaning it out when he can. But I think that would make life easier for the Park and Rec board, so they don't have to schlep the stuff back and forth to the office area back here. The accessory speed boards, those were LSA grants. We need to replace two bulletproof vests, those have a five, five-year shelf life, so that's not, that's a, that's definitely a, a need, not a want. A laptop replacement for chief. As far as public works. Dump truck number one in international, mini excavator, the compact trailer, a laptop for public works and a, an equipment trailer. So as far as the proposed public works equipment, truck number three is 25 years old and has needed many repairs to keep on the road in recent years. I feel it would be more cost efficient to purchase a 10-ton truck for its capabilities than a five-ton. As far as the John Deere would be used for snow removal of all sidewalks and the new trail in Farmview. Also would be efficient for any smaller projects that we currently lose our late 80s John Deere for. We did pick up the sidewalk that's along Zieglerville on the Open Space A. And I think we've talked about, we, we had a snow blower on, I believe this past year's budget. So this would be something that'd be a little more versatile for doing the township building, amongst other things. The mini excavator, which they, they rented one throughout most of the summer this year to do the, the different types of projects, would be efficient for all digging and grading projects, especially in areas too small for the backhoe to be used. It has been recommended by neighboring townships and excavating companies. The trailer two, number two upgrade, which is a 10,000 pound, is need to be able to move larger equipment to projects efficiently and safely. Currently, they have used the equipment bid company, or they use Sacks and Sons to move the excavator from project site to project site. That would no longer be needed. And then as far as the new hire, this would guarantee four trucks to be on the road at all times during snow events. It would allow the township to have more manpower, complete bigger projects efficiently, and also allow the public works to be completing projects and annual tasks at the same time by having two crews. Example, road mowing during other projects where they can split off in pairs. As far as the sewer capital fund CIP, I'd be looking at a revenue, budget revenue of 250,313. That does include grants and interest and the $100,000 general fund transfer. I did read off the proposed projects and purchases, which would be 523,600 in expense. 150,000 of that would be covered by grant submissions. As I previously stated, we have added Park and Rec capital projects and purchases to
For, for the items that you have the LSA grant beside it.
Yes.
We don't know if we're getting that.
Correct.
Okay.
Like I said, we're waiting.
So if we don't get that, are those still the 26s?
Are those numbers in the budget? As if you're expecting to get the revenue?
I, since, since we submitted the LSA grant, I budgeted, I usually don't budget grant money, I did budget for those things because those, that's, that's kind of where wants, needs.
So, so if we don't get those grants?
That, that's not something I would expect that the board will see on their.
So it'll come out of both sides? It'll come out of the expense as well as the revenue?
We would have to have the discussion with the board if we don't get the grants on how we want to handle, I, I.
Right, I guess what I'm saying is it could come out of both sides.
When, when you say both sides?
Meaning you, you have it in, I assume you have it in as revenue and you also have it as an expense.
Yes, yeah, I'm, I'm, right, yeah, right now, it's, yeah, they're wa, they're washing each other, yes.
Right, so if, if the future board, we don't get it, unfortunately, then the future board could say we're not doing it.
Right.
It's neutral in terms of, in terms of the overall budget.
I, and I, like I said, I don't normally budget grant money, but to offset obviously the big numbers that we've been seeing over the last couple of years and not getting too far ahead, because we know we've, we have built in road projects, as you can see, into the future capital budget. So, but I, but any grant we've submitted or plan to submit, so I didn't mention it, but I think it got mentioned, like the Zieglerville, the Zieglerville sewer extension, that's a, that's an LSA, that's a grant we're submitting. I put the Cobble Park Rehab in there, that's a grant we could, that, that's a shelf-ready that, that, that would be worthy of an LSA grant submission, so. I put the Cobble Park rehab in there. That's a grant we could, that, that's a shelf ready that, that, that would be worth, worthy of an LSA grant submission. So. But as you can see, we, we have broken down a lot more of the road projects that you guys have been waiting for individually and spread those out. But that's where we're, we, we might have to consider whether financing, almost like a catch up. So. I have had contact with Mr. Peck from Concord who did our, who did our sewer loan and there are opportunities. I know we really haven't talked much about financing, but. That's stuff for, to chew on, not for now, but as we continue to kind of trudge in the future. Look now, now that we kind of see some of the road projects. Individually. I guess any other questions on the CIP stuff?
Yeah. So you have right around 500,000 in items combined, right? For some of those equipment, the truck, mini X. So just looking at future years of the CIP. So if we say every year we're going to put 100,000. If we just say we spend it all, we spend what's on this list and it comes out to the penny. Next year, we're not going to have enough to support the following year, the 620. So that's obviously the game we're playing and that's why we wanted to do this years ago and start to save for it line by line. So looking at some of the things that traditionally, if any of us would go out to buy something like this, we could finance it as well.
Yes.
It's a fun debate to have because we have the money in the bank accounts. Why would you pay someone else the interest? At the same time, to soften the blow in future years and to make sure we don't end up with 26-year-old dump trucks on the road where we're replacing parts and pieces every year. You want to replace those for safety reasons. So definitely think about the way we funded things in the past with liquid fuels. Of course, that's another fund. We don't want to start pulling all the money out of it and we can't prepare the road. So I would look at the items on here. That would be a traditional financing opportunity. See what the rates are looking like. Level it out a little bit. Go back and look at what we did the summer from a rental standpoint. I know that's not ours then, we can't use it when we need it, but just different opportunities. Neighbors that have, I don't know, whatever it is, start having the conversation, see the big picture. This is a deja vu moment from last year. Exact same mini X, exact same trailer, exact same truck. If I recall last year, we said, once we have this, we actually don't have somewhere to store it. So we're, we're kind of back to a lot of conversations we had last year. We brought it up before. I don't remember. Which meeting, but is this the truck or we're replacing a truck? Is this the size truck we need? Are we going to run into a situation in the future where it's too big that we have to have a certain type of person with a license to drive it? Or is there something smaller we can get away with and we can drive it? I'm not the expert. I'm not suggesting to change that. I'm just saying, let's think big picture. We have about $300,000 being requested. I don't want to end up having a conversation in two years saying, we can't drive the truck because we don't have a person. And we don't have anywhere to store it and the only place to store is in our salt shed. And that's another problem. That's my comment. Um, the other thing is just some of the things. I like the way that we're doing this. At the same time, there's some items in here that potentially they don't need to be in the CIP. Like some of the, the police accessories, bulletproof vests, tasers, things like that. Like I just feel like it's, if we say we're. Yeah. Like if we say, oh, we can't fund the CIP this year, obviously we're not going to send them out without the safety equipment. So some of the items, I think maybe we're going too deep into the CIP. And it could either be a bucket of things that chief says, we need those. It's necessary and it's just part of their budget, part of uniforms, part of something else. Cause I really don't want that perception to be that we're not going to fund the safety of our officers because of the CIP. I've already said insurance, I think is very important to get that going. In general, look at. I've seen a few years or maybe next year, I forget. We have an HVAC project coming up. I've already said my piece on this.
Yep.
Let's figure out who these people are that we have contracts with servicing things. I looked at the contract of the folks who did our work this past year. Their rate went up 14% from the year before. Maybe they're the best and that's justified, but if we're just allowing them to come in and charge the agreed upon price and we don't have any advantage, let's take care of that right now. Again, in general, it's, I'm, I'm not at a point like this is the first year that I think I've been sitting here that we haven't had a, a COVID related thing going on, a hurricane related thing. So this is the first year a budget is a standalone budget. We don't have.
No ARPA money.
No ARPA, no ARPA money on the, on the bad side, but at the same time, from the IDA thing, we were paying for things out of pocket.
Yeah.
Getting reimbursed for it, trying to get our heads wrapped around that. The grants always do that to you a little bit.
Yeah.
So I think it's a year where it's really going to stress test our strategy here. I think it's a good one, but we need to make sure we're not just saying, great, we have the money to pay off what we want this year.
Yes.
Think bigger, think bigger. Find a way to soften some of these numbers that they're manageable and that the next year we have it. And then we're thinking about the next vehicle and the next vehicle. And again, I'll say it again, insurance. Let's figure out what we're doing here. That's a huge number we pay out every single year. It's probably should be a pretty big chunk of that pie. But instead it's broken up into different departments and different areas. It's not an actual number, I think. Total, total, um, spend on insurance. I think we might want to look at that. That's it.
Thank you, Terry. Does anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, I'm just, again, I think when we. Were talking about, you know, one of the things you've mentioned there with justifying the mini excavator was to. Was the trail at Farmview?
That was the, that's the, the tractor for the snow removal.
Maybe I, maybe I heard that one wrong then.
Yeah.
Anyway, that, well, we did talk about that in the sense that we don't necessarily have to clear the snow off it. We could just mark it as closed or go at your own risk. Yeah. So if that's driving this thing, I mean, they don't plow the Perkyomen Trail. So I, I don't feel if that's what's driving that purchase, I don't think.
What are the, what are the driving is this, the amount of sidewalks that we're responsible for?
Got that. All right.
And that, that's, that's in this general area. I can say your manager shoveled this front sidewalk of you. It's not fun. I think last, one of the times I was almost done, I believe that's when one of the guys pulled up. So, uh, so I think the methodology with that particular item, we've got, we've got the added spring mount sidewalk now. And that was that whole keeping it, I, the goal I think was to keep it at the sewer plant. And that way we'd be able to utilize it out and about through the, through spring mount and our, you know, our, you know, where our.
I'm sorry. Did you say keep it at the sewer plant?
We had, it, it had been talked about before. Yes. Or, or somewhere here at the township building.
So the big international, we've been using that. I asked you, is we're primarily using that for snow removal?
The, the 10-ton, yeah. I mean, I will say.
That's the one that we paid a few thousand bucks to get the new tarp on and the mechanism, and now we're getting rid of it.
Uh. Most fleets have a 10, the, the three municipalities that have had at least one 10-ton truck and they have 550s supporting it. So it is, it's to have the one big truck, just. I realize like Terry said, we are, a storage, having somewhere to park it where it's not rusting out is, is obviously an ongoing problem.
I'm just asking the questions to make sure I make an informed decision on what we do. And I kind of think what I heard Terry said is that perhaps you'd want to look into financing something like that.
Yep.
Warren, did you have a question?
I do. A question for Jason. What's a 10-ton truck?
Dump truck.
I know, but. I mean, recently we talked about GBW when we talked about trucks and. I mean, to me a sensible size would be 46,000 pound truck because that's the highest that's under CBL. That would be 12 tons, 46,000 pounds. I don't know what you mean by 10 tons.
33,000. 33,000 pound truck.
But it's what it can.
You're right in that vicinity.
The total GBW of the truck would be 39,000 for the trucks that we had put in. Where a five-ton GBW would be 23,000, 25,000 for the five-ton trucks. And the price difference between the two was $17,000. So the capabilities of buying, purchasing the truck that can, that has the GBW of 39,000 pounds. Could do a lot more with it essentially than spending only $17,000 less on a truck that's. The GBW that just 39,000 pounds. That's why we thought that we had this year's budget and last year's budget was for a 10-ton truck with the GBW of 39,000 pounds. Do you use the over CBL truck often enough that it would make sense to not be getting our equipment contractor to do that work? Uh, when it comes to like the crew going out? 39 and 25. He said we had to make extra 25 and we had to add one less truck.
Okay. Thank you, Warren. Okay. Does anyone have any other questions? Any comments?
Do we not want to flow through the tax thing or no?
No.
Okay.
Let me ask you.
Yes.
All right. So we kind of have a schedule, right? To get the budget in place.
Yeah. Let me get the schedule.
And the hope would be that we would vote on a budget when the beginning of December. Is that right?
So the hope would be. Authorized advertisement at next Wednesday's meeting. It's got to be public for 20 days.
Right.
And that, and then the adoption at the December.
Okay.
If you guys aren't, you know, it's, it's, it's strictly up to you guys.
So if we're making adjustments, you need to know that tonight.
Tonight or between now, I mean, I just said this, it's an, it's an ongoing.
Or def, by the latest next, it has to be decided upon at our next meeting.
Yes.
So we're going to be working on this again next week and a little bit more in depth, correct? To make adjustments? Not the whole thing. Obviously. Yes.
What I meant like you switching into a financing strategy, that would be an adjustment.
Like I said, I've, I've, I've had contact already with that. I mean, I, like I said, that's, that's kind of that whole how you want, you know, to proceed. I mean, realistically, and you guys know this, just because it's in next year's budget, doesn't mean we're, we pull a trigger. So you could authorize something for next year's budget with the prep that, you know, we're going to look at financing. And if it doesn't happen, then so.
I, I just wanted to make sure I understood the expectation of where we are in the process.
It was, it was, it was a tight schedule to get that December general meeting.
So, so, so for example, let's say we did a five-year finance, that would be 40,000 a year. For the truck. I'm just giving an example.
I could, like I said, I, if you, if the board, I could, I can get that information quick. I did get quotes, but it was more of a lumped between roads and equipment. And I need to give the, I need to have some shelf life of the roads as far as the type of financing and stuff. So the rates that came back conservatively were between four and a half and 6%. But.
So I guess my question for the group is, are there any adjustments that we think we may want to think about next week? That we need to give Jason a heads up so that he'll have. So he'll be able to provide us with numbers or decision points, I guess.
Do you want to make that decision right now?
Oh, I'm just asking the group.
I, I, until I have a chance to go and.
So Chuck.
Reabsorb again.
So what I have now is I have my, I have the presentation. I also have the live spreadsheet. So realistically, you know, you guys have the latest up to date. If you guys could discuss what changes, I can make that live and what gets, what gets less for advertised. I can give you, you know, the net income, the, like, I can give you that live data. To give you guys time to like, think about what you, what, what, what you got tonight and a week ago.
I guess where I've been struggling this evening, speaking for myself, is I look at the TV and I look at what's the papers in front of me and I'm.
There's no correlation here.
Well, there's correlation. It's just, there's a lot. That's why I'm swimming in it.
Well, I, I would like to see financing options for the 10-ton truck and the, what do you call it? The thing that's going to plow the sidewalks?
Mini excavator.
No.
The excavators will be used for like all that we rented this summer for all our.
Yeah, I got it.
But.
I got it.
Sidewalks and snowplows and stuff like that. The trail and all sidewalks would be the John Deere 1025R.
That's it. Yep. So it sounds like those two are probably critical. Okay. All right. Thanks.
So, so I wasn't going to turn us into a Q and A with public works, but while you're here. So, so I feel like we, we did okay last year with taking some of the nuisance of the grass mowing. Is there any other kind of chunk of work that you guys say that's another thing that's a pain in the butt that we do? That we should be considering to free up for something else that would be easy to put out to bid or something along those lines? Or even through the equipment bid to say, that's a thing that we do once or twice a year, we'd rather not touch it. And you don't have the answer now. I'm just saying, as you talked to Jason this week. Again, it's, it's turned into the, the hot topic again, but just trying to, to say. Just make it all make sense. We have a, every year with a tight budget, want to make sure that we're spending it the right way. This year it's the, the largest amount of it. Again, my, my thoughts are, I said it before, but this is the first standalone year. I don't see a need to. To increase the taxes on the revenue side. But I think it's going to be, we need to be very smart about how we spend our money. It's not just in public works. I'm not, I'm, I'm done talking about your stuff, but just in general, we need to manage it like we have in the past few years. We conservatively budget what the revenue is and hopefully crazy, the expenses don't get out of control. We've had a couple runaway trains this year with things breaking that we didn't know we had or didn't know how to fix them. We just don't want surprises. So the budget should be. Lean and mean and not scary, but at the same time, we don't want to get halfway through the year and be like, we were conservative on the expenses too. And then we're, and then we're in trouble. So. I think it's possible to have another good year and just keep an eye on everything and keep asking questions. If we get a bill for more than we thought, ask the question. Something breaks the sewer plant, say, what was it? How old was it? Why don't we know to replace it? We know better for next year. So. We know better for next year, so. That's my comment.
Thank you, Terry. Okay, if there's nothing else, we can move on to. Yes, we had an executive session this evening before our meeting to discuss legal matters. Okay, we can now move on to our public comment portion of our meeting. Is there anyone on Zoom, Jason? No, okay. Alright, are there any supervisor comments?
Only that we're working hard on our budget and I wish others would too.
Right. Okay, thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.